Without a shadow of a doubt, it's the crunk is showing social media issue. I want to welcome you to another episode of the war zone. I got my man in the building Donovan Siddiqui, the queen Dimitri Casey off tonight. And I am the five star gentleman. I'm gonna show you tonight what a real politician look like. I want y'all to grill me with your education questions. Man be created, bring it and watch your boy go to war. Cause it's what I know. Virtual fundraiser tonight, I need y'all from your checkbooks or something. Let's go, we ain't talking about $2 each. Say, man, I want to welcome you to another episode of the war zone and tell you thank you, thank you, thank you. But taking the time out to tune in, you know, without you guys, we wouldn't have a show. And uh, we really mean it when we say we appreciate you taking the time out to tune into us every single night. It is truly an honor. I'm gonna start it off with education and then we'll go to Donovan like we normally do. It's a shame that the Houston Independent School District at this day and time does not want to pay their teachers what they need to pay them. These people have worked in the classroom virtually. They're getting ready to do the budget and I want you trustees to know one thing. That if you're up for reelection this year, you're not gonna keep your seat if you don't pay them teachers, man. I, I don't need you to pay them for me, I need you to pay them because that's what needs to happen. So what I'm requesting is that you hold the budget. You hold the budget until the new superintendent takes his seat. I think that he should have some say so in this, him being a man that left his last job because he wanted a pay raise. So I think it's only fair that we give him an opportunity to chime in on this new budget. And it's not gonna hurt y'all, we've done it before. But I can't see how you are not in the business of paying teachers in the largest school district in the state of Texas. And you want to cut money from our classroom at least $258 per child? Man, that's not gonna work. You don't pay them teachers, we gonna get you up out of here. Donovan, what's going on, my friend?
Hey, 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 everybody, it is hump day, it is Wednesday, we made it this far. Uh, I want to welcome you to the war zone, Dimitri again has the night off. She might pop in, she might not, we're not exactly sure, but her brother's in town and they're out there buying some land as they say that they're gonna do and they're out there doing it. So uh, hopefully she'll uh, pop in at least for a couple of questions and things like that. But you know, it's funny that you're talking about school and you know, the school budget and school uh, issues that are going on because there's a lot of people like myself that have grown children. And we feel that, well, it's not my problem, I, my kids are done. But see, those of us that don't have kids in the school district anymore have to pay attention because our tax dollars are still funding these school systems, school businesses and all that other stuff. So it's important, if you have kids in the school district or not, to pay attention to where your dollars are going. And like the five star said, we see all of these teachers and people and God bless you if you want to be a teacher. In any country outside of the United States, do you guys realize a teacher is the third paying, highest paying career field behind a doctor and a lawyer in most other countries outside of the United States? So teaching is very important and like the five star said, uh, we're not paying these teachers. And if you're not paying the teachers, then what kind of teaching do you expect your kids to get? Because as they say in politics, we can't attract a good city manager if we don't pay them accordingly. We can't attract good leaders if we can't pay them accordingly. So if that theory works in politics, it should also work in regards to our children, right? So you know, uh, we have a candidate here is putting himself out here. A lot of candidates won't do that unless it's a debate, unless it's something controlled. They know the questions or whatever. Jerry doesn't know, know the question because a lot of the questions we hope are gonna be coming from you guys. So please throw some questions out there. I'm gonna ask him a few questions in regards and we're gonna get into it, man, we're gonna get into it. In the news, of course, you guys have saw Biden and the whole thing and they're trying to spin how poor Joe Biden, you know, his hands are tied in the Congress. And yeah, you know, things aren't going the way that he thought they were gonna go and that he promised. But he said, you know, they're gonna give him another month. Chuck Schumer said, I'll, you know, we're gonna vote on something in a month. Do you see how they keep kicking the can down the road, hoping you guys will forget and something else will come up? And all this other stuff, but he can't move his agenda as they say, his agenda stalled because of the Trumpsters and all these other aspects. But yet you control all three forms of the government that makes laws. And yet you can pass this bill, you can pass that bill, but you can't seem to explain why you can't pass anything for blacks. Or do something about these voting rights that is going on all over, all around the country. So uh, let me pass it back to Jared, you got anything uh, to say before we start the grilling?
I mean, he can't pass his agenda because he realistically didn't have one. He never had one, he wasn't forthcoming. He lied to the people. So now his lies are catching up with him, that's why he needs to lose the senate and the house in 22. So that he can blame it on the Republicans and everybody can feel sorry for him in 24. That's all the game is. Um, tonight, little bit different. Um, we're having a virtual fundraiser, so I need you to, to help me out. If you help me, I can help the kids. We gonna get there, we gonna get there, we gonna win this race and we gonna do what we do. Now it doesn't matter if you have a hundred dollars, it don't matter if you got one dollar. But you see the information floating at the bottom, um, I need you to donate. I need you tonight, I want you to dig off into your mind. Uh, I see my good friend, Ariya Rito Banks is in the building, she had a question already, I think I answered it. But I need you to dig off into your brain power. And I want you to ask me questions because I'm running for school board. And I don't know what you're gonna ask me. That's the kicker. And if a politician can't handle this heat like I'm finna handle, you should not give them your vote. So I'm ready to kick it off Donovan, let's go, um, you know, donate what you can, let's get it, man. What's happening?
Yeah, let, let's get into it and also you guys do us a favor too. Um, we're on a shadow ban, so if you could please uh, like, share and subscribe and also share this on, on your platforms. Because that way, the more the, that's the only way we really could beat the shadow ban and more people get the information out, the better. So let's get this thing kicked off and uh, let's go with the very first question, you know, out there. I know you previously answered it, but for those that are just now logging on. Um, Aria, Aria said, I hope I said that right. Will they ever discontinue standardized testing and increase teachers' pay?
Well, let's start with standardized testing, I'm not a fan of standardized testing. Uh, when your child graduates, you know, they want to know about two tests. They want to know about the ACT and the SAT. Nothing about their star test determines what your child would take in college. The star test is just another means for some vendor that's cool with some legislators to line their pockets. Now the question is, is will they ever stop it? Yeah, if we get the right legislators down in Austin to write some legislation to get it up out of here, it's useless. And all it's doing is costing the state of Texas and you taxpayers about $44 million a year for a test that your child can actually opt out of. So you know, it is what it is, as far as teacher pay. I believe a first year teacher should make no less than $65,000 a year. In the biggest school district in the state of Texas, which is the Houston Independent School District, that's a drop in the bucket. This year they're offering our teachers like $750 stipends. That's a joke. Why don't you turn that 750 and turn that into a raise for our teachers? Give them their performance raises, stop with the games. You can't have a high quality teacher in a classroom if you don't want to pay them high quality pay. We keep losing great teachers every year because the Houston Independent School District only wants to spend money in the upper level departments. You only want to make sure the people inside of H I S D administration makes all the money. And the teachers get the crumbs who do all the legwork. So I believe that these teachers, and I'm gonna tell you, when I get on the school board, the first thing that I am going to do, my first order of business, I'm gunning for teacher raises. I'm gunning for them from the gate because they deserve it, they've worked so hard the last year and a half.
Okay, cool, um, yeah, I, I want to ask a question just to get this kicked off. Um, you know, we know you have a background in, you know, and passion for the kids and everything. But why, why get involved? Why are you getting involved in this? Why do you give a damn? You could be out there making, you know, writing music, living off your publishing, doing all the stuff that you do. Why do you even want to get involved with all of this?
This generation of children are the greatest generation that's ever been made, but they're behind an eight ball. When it comes to education, I believe what Brown versus the Board of Education was intended to do. Give every single kid a fair and quality education. My biggest issue is that children are not getting a quality education. It would be good for me to walk off because Jalen Monroe is no longer in school. She's not there, but I'm a taxpayer. You see what I'm saying? And as long as you taking my tax money, you gonna give me what my money paid for. Which is a quality education for every child. And I believe that if we get out here and we fight for it, especially on the poor side of town, and that includes black, Latino, whoever lives on the poor side of town. Instead of you putting my child on a bus to go to the rich side of town to get a quality education, why don't you just fix the school that's in the neighborhood? Why don't you just fix the school? So it's easy for me to be in this fight because I want to see these kids get a fighting chance. Now if they blow their chance, that's on them. But at least we gave them a fighting chance with a quality education.
Hmm, I like that answer and speaking of Jalen Monroe, she has a question and she says, as a board member, where would you look to make budget cuts?
The upper level administration in H I S D, the, the school support officer position needs to go. What do SSOs do besides go to the campus and sleep after time? They're making a hundred thousand dollars for what? You don't need a middleman between an area superintendent and a, and a uh, a principal? You need to get rid of that. Uh, you need to make major adjustments as far as decreasing the staff in the administration. There are a lot of positions that were nothing more than the, the homeboy frat brother sorrow hookup. And a lot of those positions need to go. We need to get our money back to our campuses. We need to get our money back in our, in our, in our classrooms. So that our teachers are not taking their hard earned money to buy the necessities that the school should get. You see what I'm saying? So yeah, I would, I would definitely look at cutting in the administration because you don't need all those positions. It's a waste of money.
Um, DJ Blue 22 says, I hope I said that right. How can we get the trades back into the school? What's your idea about bringing a vocation back into schools?
You gotta get the school district out of bed with the local community colleges. Because remember, all the stuff that's at community college somewhere down the line in the past, they were on the school campuses. So all these people got in bed together to shift this over to the community college. And now make your child pay for a trade that they could have possibly gotten on a high school campus. Now how do we get it back? We just need to look at the needs of every single campus. Look at the demographics of that campus. If you're in Southeast Houston, okay, let's look at cosmetology. Because it should have never been taken off the, off a black campus school anyway. Let's get cosmetology back into the school. Now what it's gonna take is gonna take some money, y'all. Because most of these new schools have been rebuilt. So they didn't build these schools with the classrooms to accommodate some of these trades. You see what I'm saying? So we gonna have to go into the budget, pour into the budget and see where we can find money to start. You gonna have to go slow to get it back. You can't bring them back all at one time. Let's target three or four schools every year and let's see if we can bring one or two trades back. So that these kids can get these certifications and come out of school and go straight to owning their own businesses for the ones that don't want to go to college.
A quick question that we have, as we know, because of the pandemic and you know, we're not done with the pandemic. But uh, the one thing the pandemic has exposed is the fact that a lot of teachers can't teach. Uh, as a board member, how would you moving forward, how would you incorporate the uh, internet schooling and the traditional schooling in an aspect of maybe like for seniors or something like that? You know, because it's a technology that's there, how would you incorporate that moving forward with traditional schooling?
Well, first of all, we have to clearly understand the dynamics and what's the job of a trustee. Now what I can't do and I won't do here tonight, and I've, I've said this in open forums and I'll explain to you why. Is I don't answer certain questions that are outside of my job scope. You see what I'm saying? But if I'm just a parent, you know, if I'm just a parent, you know, there's a way to get it done. But in order to affect the curriculum in that manner, you're gonna have to deal with your legislators. They're gonna have to go into Austin and they're gonna have to fight and make some bills to incorporate that into the classroom. And I think digital learning is mandatory at this point in the world, you, you have to have it. But I also know that traditional books should never leave a school campus. Because when you get to college, what's, what's the first place that you have to go once they give you your money? You gotta go to the bookstore. So these kids need to be in the schools, working with the librarian who's a certified teacher. Librarians have to be certified teacher, they teach you how to do research. That's where we need to start at. And then you use the computer as an attribute, don't lean just on that computer. Man, I hate digital books. I will spend $300 on a book in college right now before I'll spend $35 for that same book digitally. Because I like the book in my hand, you see what I'm saying? So I think we, it can work, but we gonna have to have some of these folks in Austin to help us get us there.
Okay, hey, you guys, and again, please do not forget to hit that donation button. We take Zelle, uh, cash app, whatever you got, we'll take it. Uh, if you got a Bitcoin, you got one Bitcoin, we'll take one Bitcoin, that, that'll handle it. So uh, please don't forget to donate, we're doing a virtual fundraiser right now. And our girl Latonya Whittington, her question is this. My question is, how will you make yourself accessible for the parents to reach you? Especially the ones who are volunteering to help their child and others?
Well, first of all, I'll have a separate office away from H I S D, I don't know if board members have offices. But I will have a virtual office that will be manned by my secretary every day. And if a parent needs to get to me, they just need to call and make an appointment. Those who know me know one thing, that when you call me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, if I don't answer that phone, I'm calling you back. Me being accessible to my parents, that won't change because I'm accessible to them now. I've been wanting to rest today, of course, I got a few phone calls. But I mean, I, I just don't know how not to answer the phone. Uh, being accessible not just to the parents but to the taxpayers is every month, I'm going to have a monthly meeting before the board meeting. So that we can go over the actual agenda together as a unit and you guys get to tell me how to vote on the agenda items. Who does that in politics? Because I work for you. So I'll explain the agenda item to you, tell you the pros and cons of it. And you're gonna tell me yes or no, I'll make notations. And when I go into the boardroom, you can watch live and watch me vote exactly the way you told me to vote.
You know, and you know, and that's a good reminder for people, you know, usually when you, when you vote in a representative, they are supposed to represent the majority of their constituents. We have politicians now that once they get elected, they're like, well, I'm gonna vote my conscience. And then we don't do anything about that. So you know, that, that was a great answer, uh, that I like to hear that you're gonna do the will of the people who put you there. So that's important. Um, Jalen says, uh, you seem to have an aggressive stance, but are you willing to compromise on agendas you may not fully agree with? Or is it all or nothing when it comes to your district?
It's not about all or nothing when it comes to my district, it's all or nothing when it comes to these kids. So you know, the thing is, is don't look at my stance as aggressive, I'm passionate. I have a passion for children. So the thing is, is some days you're not gonna win every battle. You're not gonna win every battle in the, in the voting room, you're not, you gotta create, you gotta create allies in them back rooms. But the one thing I will never do to my people, I may have to create some allies to get some work done, but I'm not selling the people out. That's not gonna happen. So you can never expect for me to vote the wrong way. And, and I will tell you this, I got a call today from a prominent politician that told me, I know one thing, I can go to sleep at night if you in that boardroom and not have to worry about if it's some, some shenanigans gonna go on if you in there. So no, I, I can handle myself and, and I know when I need to step down, I know when I need to fold them. But I also know that I'm coming through the door to fight. I'm coming through the door to get what these kids need. And some days you gotta be aggressive and you gotta stand on them ten toes and let, let the chips fall where they may.
I just want to give a shout out to, um, Ms. Bowie is in here, as you guys know, she's a Chicago teacher. So Ms. Bowie, we hope that you bring some tough questions for Mr. Monroe here. Um, Aria says, we need leaders that are active in the schools. Uh, Ms. Audrey Davis says, home economics is missing, science is missing. What can you do in regards to, or what is your opinion on, on those subjects?
Well, first of all, home economics is not missing, they call it culinary arts nowadays. And in the Houston Independent School District, culinary arts is only in certain schools. Uh, I don't agree with it. Uh, I had, I, I was one of the only few football players that took home economics. And that's because I kinda knew what I wanted to do when I got out of school. So I ended up being an offshore catering manager for 12 years. So home economics is definitely something that comes into play for me every single day. I'm in an Airbnb, I gotta cook, I gotta cook every day. So I think that home economics should be in every school, but it's not. I also believe that parents, if it's something that you want in your school, it's gonna take more than a trustee. It's gonna take you showing up at a board meeting, it's gonna take you showing up at a PTO meeting. It's gonna take you having a relationship with the principal on your campus to try and get the things that your kids deserve and they need. So we can make anything happen, just know that it's gonna take you, Mr. Taxpayer, Ms. Taxpayer to start showing up. You can't expect for this to happen if you don't show up.
Um, SRT Red Eye says, can we get credit building taught in schools?
Probably as an after school program, because right now the way the curriculum is set, nope. No, but that doesn't stop a nonprofit organization from developing a relationship with the school district as well as maybe developing a relationship with um, the actual campus to where you can do an after school program. And I, and I think it should be done, I mean, there's a lot of things that we should be doing. But like I said, we gotta use our creativity, we gotta fight to get this stuff on these campuses. So I mean, yeah, I think it can be done, but as an after school program.
Yeah, uh, and speaking of that, on the same lines, uh, currently around the nation, a lot of revisionism is being uh, put back into the school books. Where they're not teaching certain uh, uh, factual history type uh, things. Like they're putting in the lost cause of the South. And a lot of people didn't even know that there was a Tulsa massacre because it's not taught in schools. What is your, your stance on revisionism and them taking out uh, ethics studies of other ethnic groups within the United States in the curriculum? Should that be in there or should it not be in there?
I think it should be in there, that's not a question. But I also know that the history of America is an ugly history. And I think that when you get to the point to where you want to hide certain aspects of history, you're embarrassed by it. You're embarrassed by what your people did. And you don't want people to know, more importantly, the ones that are asleep, you want them to stay asleep because talking about history and exposing certain kids to it could actually wake them up. So I think that it should be taught. I know in the state of Texas, you know, they just passed a, a bill in the last few weeks exactly about that, that certain things can't be taught. I mean, they, they can't talk about a George Floyd situation in the classroom anymore. There's no way to get around it because we, not we, but you guys elected legislators that went to Austin and did not put up a good enough fight for this not to happen. You need to fix those problems in the next election.
Okay, Aria says, the classrooms are way too big for one teacher. We are losing children in the cracks, we need smaller uh, classrooms. What can we do to deal with the child to teacher ratio?
Well, first of all, we, we, we have too many classroom waivers. Uh, normally you should have about 22 kids in a classroom, 22 to one, 22 to one teacher. But of course, in the Houston Independent School District, they'll go get a classroom waiver. And we need to cut back on the waiver, so I'll take you back a few years. Maybe about four or five years ago, the state of Texas told H I S D, look, you got 1,400 waivers. That mean 1,400 classrooms that were overloaded, they said you need to cut that in half. And they were like, what are we gonna do? You know, uh, they said, we don't know what you're gonna do. You built these schools too small. That was the biggest problem. When we rebuilt our schools, you had a school like Yates that could accommodate 3,500 kids. So when you rebuilt it, you made it accommodate only 1,400 kids. You see what I'm saying? But knowing full well, and I'm just using these numbers, knowing full well that they would be over 1,400. So that overloads your classroom. So the thing is, one, they need to increase the size of the campus. That's the first thing, you need more classrooms to decrease. Secondly, you need to start paying these teachers so that you can get more qualified teachers to want to work for your school district. So instead of being on a campus where you need, you got 16 math classes when you realistically need 32. Okay, you might need to increase the size of the campus, add some extra buildings or whatever, but you definitely need more teachers. And you're not gonna get more teachers if you don't pay them more money. You're not gonna get more teachers if all you want to do is put them on growth plans after their first year. First year teachers struggled, they automatically struggled. So why throw them on a growth plan, basically putting them on probation? You know, because they struggled their first year. Nobody told you to bring all them teachers out of college and then throw them on them gladiator school campuses? You see what I'm saying? So it's, it's, you gotta increase the size of the campus, but you need to increase your personnel size too. And that way you can decrease the amount of kids, it's just numbers.
Alright, so let me ask you this in a follow up to, to that question, it leads into that question. I'm a taxpayer, I don't have any kids in the system, but I pay taxes. You know, all, we know a lot of problems cost money. How do we go about doing that without raising taxes significantly or whatever?
Stop stealing the money. They need to stop stealing the money. Man, we did a bond for 2.89 billion. We wake up one morning, 300 million gone. Stop stealing the money. Next question.
Yeah, you know, we had the same thing over here, we had a $2.7 million bond and you know, oh man, it was just a mess, it was a mess.
Exactly, we're misappropriating too much money. And then we act like we don't have to, you know, we don't have to uh, account for this. They need to just stop stealing the money, man, we get more than enough money. See, right now you're deep, you, you're gonna decrease the amount of PUA funding on a campus by $258 per child. Why you doing that when, when, when the people just told us that we getting an additional 900 million? So what you gonna do with the 900 million? Stop stealing the money.
Yes, common sense, man, that's a common sense one, you guys. Again, we're having a virtual fundraiser tonight, anything you guys can do to uh, hit that jerk? If you could change the banner to put up the Zelle and all the other uh, stuff up. Um, Robin Cooper, a good friend of ours and she likes to chime in and stuff like that. Robin Cooper says, you hear of children living under the poverty level. How will you address that area as far as outreach programs in the community where people can donate and offer assistance?
Well, first of all, that once again, that's outside of my job scope as a trustee. But just as a taxpayer and, and, and a former parent, we have a great system called wraparound services. Um, man, they got some good wraparound specialists in the district that work at some of our most at risk schools. And that is their job to, to, to create these relationships in the community. I'm gonna tell you something, they've done, they've done a fabulous job. I mean, we got some schools that got brand new washers and dryers. So if a kid can't, you know, come to school with dirty clothes or something and he's embarrassed, you don't have to be embarrassed. Just put it in a laundry bag, bring it, bring it to the school, they gonna wash your clothes for you, they gonna take care of you, take care of you. You know, um, from, from a food standpoint, I think Betty Wiggins in food services had done a great job since she showed up about three years ago. Uh, our kids now, um, you know, normally you've got a lot of kids that get to school late because their parents don't wake them up in the mornings. So they end up in first period and they end up hungry. We, we've got a situation going now where they bring the food to the classroom, the first class of the day. They make sure that every kid has something to eat. And on a lot of campuses, at the end of the day, kids, they eat lunch about 12. So by the time they get out of school at three, they're hungry again. You got a lot of campuses now that have incorporated making sure that kids get a meal before they go home. So I think we're doing a pretty good job, I just think we need to be more consistent with it and don't let it fall by the wayside. But Betty Wiggins has done a great job in food services, my friend.
That, that, that's also a great answer and again, you know, you have a lot of candidates and I don't know how many candidates are running down there, but you got people that come from all walks of life and all background. But the one thing I, I find about you is you're very knowledgeable about what's going on in the school district that you're running in. You seem to have the numbers, you seem, you know, you're also a, a product. You seem, you know, you're also a, a product of that school district area. And, um, so, so speaking of which, why is it that in a big school district like the Houston Independent School District, there is a disparity between certain areas if our tax dollars are supposed to be spread evenly between, uh, without, throughout the school district?
It's the good old boy system, man. Let's just be honest about it. This has been going on, this didn't happen overnight. The disparities didn't happen overnight, they've been going on. And the only issue was like right now, a lot of people have woke, they woke up and they can plainly see what has happened. So as long as it took to screw it up, it may take that long to get it back in order. But the only way you're gonna get it back in order is to stop playing the game. Uh, equity is a word that they love to toss around, and I hate the word equity because I feel like you use that word as a means to camouflage the fact that you can't get the job done. That's how I feel. I believe that if one school has 20 extracurricular activities and it's a middle school and it's in a prominent white neighborhood, the black school should have 20 extracurricular activities. The Latino school should have 20 extracurricular activities. Whatever we need to do, whatever we need to spend to make that happen needs to happen. If one school has 450 computers and the black school only has 100, we know how many we need to buy. And that's all it needs to be. We can either keep playing around with this thing or we can fix it. Now, you can either buy it or you can take from the haves and give to the have-nots. That's the easiest way to do it and you wouldn't spend any money. But the people who are the haves, a lot of days, they're selfish. And they don't wanna give to the have-nots because they don't wanna take away from their children. But me, I'm in the business of making sure that every kid has everything that they need. And we just gotta stop the foolishness and just get to it.
Ask you this, uh, a quick question too, uh, in, in regards to the school district. A lot of schools, especially down in the South, have started consolidating their schools. And, uh, you went to Yates High School, a notorious pro NFL football farm team, you know, whatever. You could, you know, pu- uh, pull some great agents out of there. And we noticed that with a lot of the redistricting of these schools and the consolidation of these schools and the closing of a lot of schools, you're finding great schools that had great sports programs and great programs, period, being basically cut off and basically starved of resources. So as a Yates Lion, you know, which is a very prestigious, you know, school in a- academics and Texas sports, what can you, you know, number one, why was that done? Give us a little history about why was that done?
Well, first of all, it was done because in 1985, a football team from Jackie Yates High School went and beat a perennial power, which was Odessa Permian, your Friday Night Light boys, we beat them 37 to nothing. And they made a promise that no historically black or predominantly black school would ever do what we did again. And in HISD, since 1985, nobody's even come close. So they made sure, the way they did it, they did it with open enrollment. They, they made sure that the kid could go to any school that he wanted as long as he had an HISD address. Okay, but inside of that, they used the specialty programs to play with the open enrollment. What they also did is they rezoned. They rezoned. So for example, when they, about maybe 15 years ago, Lamar High School, which has everything, was inches away from being closed due to low enrollment. Because the people in River Oaks were not sending their children to Lamar, they were sending them to St. Thomas. So they rezoned, they rezoned. And they pushed Lamar's line, like Lamar's line sits right here and Yates' line sits about right there. They moved Lamar's zone line all the way over here into Yates' community so that they could steal the regular school, the regular students from Yates. And they'll say, well, nah, he not right. About five, six years ago, Lamar went to the state championships in football, they got close, but they didn't win. And they walked out 110 kids on the football field in Cowboy Stadium. 95 of those kids were zoned to Yates. So 95 of those football players should have been at Jackie Yates Senior High because they were regular students. You see what I'm saying? So my first order of business, along with teacher salaries, is the rezoning of our districts. You need to rezone and give us our children back, not just for sports. But if you rezone, we get students back in the seats. And that's how schools get funding, based on the number of kids that sit in those seats every morning before 10:30. And parents, you need to help me get that done for one reason. You don't have to send your kid outside your zone. We need to force these people to spend the money in the zone where your money is paid, your tax money is paid. So that way, these kids can get a quality education and they can walk to school. They don't have to get on a bus at 5:30 in the morning going to a magnet program because we just created one at the poor black school and it's just as high-powered as it is anywhere else.
Uh, Hun- uh, Thunder says, and for those of us who live in those poor districts, is there any way for us to give money to help fund, uh, programs?
Walk into the school. Walk into the school, talk to the principal, and, uh, you can donate money directly to the school if you choose to. But what you should do is when you decide to do that, Thunder, is earmark your money. If you say, I want this to go to the art department, I want it earmarked, that means they can't just put it in the general fund and spend it on what they wanna spend it on. It has to go to the art department. So whenever you come back, I'd like to see what you spent my money on. They gotta show you. You're taxpayer, they gotta show you. So, yeah, you walk into the school and do that. If you, if you, if you talking about investing thousands or millions, then all you gotta do is go to the school district. And then figure out, same thing, earmark your money. Earmark your money and they will guide you in the right way of how to do it.
Hey, you guys, don't forget to, uh, please like, share and subscribe on Facebook, YouTube and all the, and even on your platform so we can be, uh, beat a shadow ban. And let's get this message out there. Araya says, I have noticed that kids that are mainstream in the classrooms are being pushed through, uneducated. How will we assure these kids are successful and educated?
Well, first of all, we need to make sure our kids are reading on grade level by the third grade. We, we need a, a true literacy program that's gonna make sure our kids are reading on grade level. We can't start trying to fix, and let me, let me help you because she gonna kill me because she know I know how to pronounce her name. Her name's Aria. So, so that way you get it right. Um, the thing is, you have to start early. You have to start early, making sure that these kids are learning. Um, just because a kid has a behavioral problem does not mean that he needs to be in special ed. And they've done that to our children far too often. Just because they have behavioral problems, they'll put them in special ed. And once they put them in special ed, that's like the last, the least, the loss. They don't, they don't even care anymore. So we need to make sure from a literacy standpoint that our children are reading on grade level in the third grade. And I believe in my heart that if a child is failing, it does no good to push him through. It does no good to push him through, especially at the, at the lower levels, at the, at the early grade levels. Because by the time they get to high school, high school principals spend most of their days as well as teachers trying to get them up to grade level. You see what I'm saying? So there's very little learning going on by the time they get to high school because if he's reading on a fourth grade level, you gotta teach him how to read. And he in the ninth grade. No, we need to solve this at the lower levels or we gotta go old school. You can't seem to learn this fourth grade work, you're gonna stay in the fourth grade.
Uh, one of the, 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 the big issues of today that's gonna be affecting a lot of schools across the nation is security on the campuses of the schools. What is your, uh, thoughts in regards to, uh, budgeting, in regards to security and keeping the kids safe?
In the Houston Independent School District, that the police department is worse than the teachers when it comes to pay. Uh, I think they're the 13th lowest-paid police organization in the area, in the surrounding counties. They don't pay them enough money. They don't have modern-day technology, they're running on Flintstone-era technology. Um, I don't believe in defunding the police when it comes to schools. I don't because the new superintendent is coming in and, you know, where he was, he got rid of police officers on the campuses. Well, brother, before you get here, you may not wanna do that on some of our campuses. So, no, I believe that our children should be safe at all times on campuses. And, and I know a lot of people like, man, we don't need metal detectors, we don't need this, we don't need that. At the point where we're at right now, what's more important? For your little baby to be a little bit uncomfortable when they get to school or them getting their car when they get, when they get out of school? Because some of them ain't making it home during the course of a day. So whatever we need to do to upgrade security on our campuses, that's what needs to be done. It should not be an option. And as far as how much money we should spend, that's not an option to me either. Spend whatever it needs, that, whatever, whatever we need to spend, let's spend it and make sure our kids, teachers, support services, administrations are safe on a daily basis.
I like that answer, I like that answer. Jalen says, do you agree with Joe Biden wanting to add four more years to the education system?
I don't believe nothing about Joe Biden. I think Joe Biden needs to shut the hell up because he, he's disingenuous. He doesn't care. If Joe Biden, the only way I'll answer a Biden question from anybody is if you could tell me why Joe lied about those student loans to get those votes. Take care of those people with those student loans.
Yeah, and his wife's a teacher, can you believe that? Um, okay, so, you know, he, here's what I wanna know. I did a little research on you, Five Star. I know you're a product of the Houston Independent School District, you're a homegrown, uh, person down there. But, um, why as a parent should I vote for you or even support you when the word on the street is you were one of those kids that people had to talk to excessively? And the story is, you yourself took a bus to get to school one day.
I took a bus because it taught me, you know, to take some initiative. That mean I'm gonna do whatever I gotta do to accomplish the goal. That's simple. You don't have to vote for me. I, I tell you that right now, you don't have to vote for me. But if you don't vote for me, let me tell you what's gonna happen. That sound familiar, don't it? I said that four years ago. And four years ago, I told you what would happen if you didn't vote for me. And everything I said that was going to happen, happened. So let me tell you why you need to vote for me. Because if you don't, there's only seven historically black high schools left in the state of Texas. In the city of Houston, you have the first three. The first one that was built was Booker T. Washington, 1921. The second one that was built was Jackie Yates Senior High School, 1926. The third one that was built was Phyllis Wheatley High School, 1927. You don't vote for me, I can promise you, they'll shut the doors on them. Not only will they shut the doors on those three, they'll shut the doors on several African-American schools. And they're gonna use the COVID as a means to do it. They're gonna use the lack of kids in the school because they can't seem to find all of them as a means to do it. A lot of African-American teachers are gonna lose their jobs. This is what's gonna happen if you don't vote for me. The quality of education that your kid get right now, which is watered down, will get to the point where it ain't nothing but sugar water. Now you make that decision on who you need to vote for. I think you need to vote for me because we need a male presence on the school board. We don't have one. All we have is nine women on the school board that don't do nothing but catfight. You need somebody on the school board that's knowledgeable or the whole inner workings of the school system from 4,400 West, West 18th Street all the way to the state Capitol. I know that all. Now you got to ask yourself, do I want to keep the ones that I have, that have four or five degrees? They speak very eloquently and they're screwing my kid every single day. Or do I want the foul-mouthed, cigarette-smoking, yak-drinking, passionate brother that's been on the grind for him for nine years? I think you might wanna make that decision. Because when it's all said and done, you got one shot at greatness. And your window to make sure that your children get a quality education is slowly closing.
Yeah, you, you know, and, and I brought that up because I'm not here to tell people how to vote. But you got a lot of these slicksters out there, they got the degrees, they've got the jackets and, and they sound good and they look good.
Well, let me say this here, before you say that, when you say that. If you've never advocated in front of the podium, how can you advocate behind the Diaz? I've spent nine years on s- outside of that podium battling for children. You think if I get in there, I ain't gonna do the same thing? The people that sit behind the Diaz, a lot of times, they've never spoken at a school board meeting. They don't care. They're not even politicians. They're somebody that these back-room organizations put money behind to put them on the school board so that they could make more money.
Yeah, you know, and, yeah, you know, and, and the thing is, I bring that up is, I don't know about, you know, you guys out there that are listening and stuff, but, um, do you ever like, as a parent, you sit there, or even as a voter, you sit there and say, I could do just as good a job as that person? You know, you're looking at yourself, you're saying, hey, you know, I'm not perfect, I've done this, I've done that. Yeah, I was probably an unruly kid. Uh, you know, a lot of my friends growing up, I was the least likely, not that I was a bad kid. I was the least likely to have gone on to be successful and do what I did in the military and whatever. Everybody was like Donovan did this. So what I'm saying is, when you look at a candidate like Monroe, he's homegrown, he's passionate, he's been there, he's done that. And he can relate to you as a, a parent or somebody in the community. Because it's kinda hard to go up to a, uh, an official and they do not relate to your background whatsoever, whatsoever. And you're telling them this is what's going on, you know, they have no clue. Like when people come up to me, they talk about the hood, I don't know anything about the hood because I wasn't raised in the hood. So I couldn't relate necessarily. So I just wanted to kinda bring that out in regards to the fact that, yeah, you're right, you do smoke. You, you do have a, a nine-year career on record of being passionate and saying what, what's on your, your mind. And you know what? It reminds me of me. It reminds me of, of some of these people out here. You know, they want, we want the best that we can get for our dollars, for our children to advocate for, for us when we are, uh, going to these school boards that are gonna look out for us. Because it's bad enough, I gotta go to this minimum wage job. So, um, Fayville says, Monroe has the experiences that will make him a good school advocate. And I, I agree with that.
And I appreciate that.
I agree with that. Um, but he, he, here's another question that, that I have for you in, in regards to, um, teaching. You're on the school board, you have teachers that, some teachers, I, and I understa- I'm not an educator, so I don't know how the tenure thing work. But you have some teachers that have been in there too long and they're just there for the check after a while. How do you get rid of, not get rid of, but how do you deal with the bad teachers versus teachers that are gonna do, you know, you know what I mean?
Well, I think, this is what I think and this is what I feel, this is what I know, that, that, that's the opposite way for us in HISD. Um, what I mean by that is, the older teachers seem to be the more established ones that can control the classrooms, that, that know how to teach. They can teach out, they can teach theyself out of a box. It doesn't matter what strategy you give an older teacher, they can fit it out and they can make it happen. I think the younger teachers, a lot of days, they have problems. They have problems because they're new, you know, and it's not fair that when you go into personnel, you know, you're, you're, you're a young white teacher, you know, fresh out of college, and they send you over to Addicks Middle School. Or they didn't tell you where that was, they didn't tell you what, go down over there? So now you in this classroom with 50 gorillas. And I'm talking about, you don't even know how, what to do with this. You nervous after the first day, you don't even wanna come back. So I, I think it's the opposite. I think we need to value our older teachers more. I think we need to go back and the ones that, that can come back into the school system, we need to welcome those older teachers back with open arms. Because our children really started hurting when they started, you know, firing the older tenured teachers because they didn't wanna pay them the money that came with being an older tenured teacher. And our children started hurting, you know, at that point from an educational standpoint. So I, I think it's a little bit different than what you're saying, it's kinda opposite. But I've seen it in HISD, we need to get them older teachers back.
And, and, and real quick, we, we got, uh, Demetra has popped up in, into the chat. Welcome to the show, Demetra, we're, we're missing you today. Here's a, a big question that, uh, I got on another, um, uh, page, platform, yeah, another page. Uh, what is your stance on transgender sports?
In regards to what?
Uh, transgender athletes.
I'm a, I'm a guy that stands on his, on his morals and I don't wanna disrespect anybody, but I really believe that boys should play sports with boys and girls should play sports with girls. Um, and no matter how you put it, we are boys, we have more testosterone than the girls. We, 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 we have more everything than those girls. We, 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 we have more everything than those girls. And I don't think that it's, it's fair to give somebody an unfair competitive advantage when it comes to sports. But that again is a legislative issue that, that they would have to deal with on the legislative side. It doesn't fall within my scope of my job. So regardless of how I may feel, got love for transgenders. I just, when, when it comes to sports, you need to play the sport that you're supposed to play. But that's not my decision. That's the Texas state legislators who have to decide that.
Absolutely. You guys, don't forget to hit that cat button or that Zelle account and go ahead and donate. Uh, we know you just got your, um, your tax refund and all that good stuff like that. So don't act like you ain't got no money there. So Black Ricardo says, if possible, how will you make sure that the policies are being followed by the rest of the school board?
You got attorneys in that room, man. Let me tell you how you can make sure. First of all, if you understand the law, then they, they just can't tell you anything. You see that? I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna give Black Ricardo an example. Right now, they have about maybe fourteen, fifteen meetings a month. School board, workshops, everything, if it's a workshop, it's considered a meeting. Mr. Monroe would have a problem with that for one reason. According to the rules, the policies, the procedures and the law, I'm only obligated to attend four meetings a month. That's it. So all these extra meetings with all that food, that, that them games, you know, and I would, I would do more than four. But I definitely wouldn't do fourteen. You see what I'm saying? So my thing is, is voice in my opinion in a respectful manner, in a closed-door session. We need to fix this because I will not be participating in all of these meetings just because y'all don't have anything else to do. But I'm gonna make sure every meeting that I attend counts. So that way I don't have to wanna come back to another meeting. I left it on the floor in that meeting.
Uh, Demetri Kay says, what's your take on implementing the sixteen nineteen project in the school's curriculum?
That's a legislative issue. That's a legislative issue. So you know, when we're talking about curriculum, that goes up to the Texas Education Agency. Uh, the, the guy that's over T, you know, T E A, Mike Marath. That's your legislators that have to deal with the curriculum side. I believe that a lot of things should be in the curriculum. But from a school board standpoint, that's not our job to put them in there.
Also, she says, what are your thoughts on uniforms for teachers and students?
I like it. If you gonna force a kid to wear a uniform, force the teacher to wear one too. Now me realistically, I don't like uniforms. I don't, I don't like uniforms. I, I don't, I don't, I don't. Uniforms to me creates a culture. Now, at a lot of black schools, you got uniforms. A lot of white schools, they got free dress. Uniforms create a prison culture to me. And the way that they have them dressed with the, the red shirt and the khakis, why don't you go watch some videos of how they really dress in the penitentiary? And more importantly, most of the schools, they only seem to want you to wear blue and red polos. What are blue and red polos associated with? What, what are blue and red associated with? I don't like uniforms. And well, you know, some parents ain't got no money. Say, man, hold on a second. You got money for Jordans? You got money for, for, for Bentleys at prom time? Get them kids some decent clothes, send them to school. I think that you need to put them in the mind frame of what it's gonna be like when they go to college. Because if you go to Yates, you get to walk to school, you walking with TSU students who are free dressing. And you a senior in high school and you got a uniform on. Prepare them for the next level. That's how I feel about it. But I believe if a kid gotta wear a uniform, they should make the staff wear one too.
Um, thoughts on the TF, on TFA and urban schools? I'm not sure what that is, but.
TFA is Teach for America. That is a organization that, you know, people straight out of college, you know, they join Teach for America. And Teach for America normally sends, you know, different people to different school districts. And they will hire these people, Teach for America graduates or whatever they call them. And they come into our schools and they get to stay a year or two and the district will pay off their student loans. I don't like it. Because Teach for America teachers get bonuses to come and work in the schools when you have teachers that are already there that don't get the same bonuses. I don't like it. Teach for America teachers don't stay long. They stay an average of one and a half years in our schools. That's no consistency in the classroom. So no, I don't like it. I think we need to find a better way of doing it.
Uh, a quick question is, how long, how many terms do you expect to be on the school board?
Two maximum.
Why is that?
Train, I wanna train somebody to, to get ready to take my place. I'm an old man, man. I'm, I wanna see if we can make a difference. And if we can get the ball rolling, then somebody comes behind me and then you do what you do for two terms. We don't need to sit up there seven, eight terms. You know, if, if it's an unpaid position, what the hell I'm gonna be doing up there seven, eight terms anyway? I got a life I wanna live. You see what I'm saying? But I think that I can make a difference in, in two terms.
And in regards to school bonds and the making of new schools, in your opinion, as a candidate and as a school board member, do you think we need more schools, less schools? Or, you know, do we just need more money to throw more money at the education system in the Houston School District?
Well, first of all, the state of Texas is not funding our schools properly. They're not, we, we, they're not funding our schools properly. They need to get rid of the Robin Hood game that they play. Where you steal from the rich and you give to the poor. I don't agree with that either, you know, uh, but here's the thing. We have to, one, make sure that we're spending our money right in the Houston Independent School District. And it's been proven that we're not spending our money the right way. We, we have a lot of wasteful spending that we do in the Houston Independent School District. Um, the special populations department, which is, you know, special ed students. Every time you look up, there's money stolen from that department or it's, it's just not being ran right. We have to make sure that we're spending our money right. You see what I'm saying? That's the first order of business. Before we can go out there and get forty, forty million dollars extra a year on taxes or whatever we decide to do, we gotta make sure what we got, we spending it in the right places. And if we don't do that, it ain't gonna matter how much money we get. It's just more money for them to steal.
In regards to city versus school, as a school board member, you're gonna have to be dealing sometimes with the city overlap versus the school overlap in regards to city property versus school property and issues of that nature. As we know, Houston has a big problem in, at, down at City Hall. How would you deal with the Mayor Turner if you had to talk about issues in regards to representing the school district?
Well, first of all, Mayor Turner could stay the hell up out of my district now and business. I don't need his help. And the reason I don't need his help is normally when we need help, see, remember, I was an advocate before I became a school board rep. Y'all think about that. We'll be able to say that in November. When I needed help and I went to City Hall, the first thing they told me, that is school business. We don't get in your business. So guess what? I don't need you in my business. I know exactly what needs to be done for the kids in my district as well as for the kids in the Houston Independent School District. So I'm not gonna play the politic game. I don't wanna have any more political friends than I have on this day right here. Only thing I wanna do is help kids, help the teachers, help the administrations and be an asset to my community. But as far as needing Turner or working with Turner to make it work, I don't need that. Last time we tried to work with Turner, he was trying to take eleven of our black schools and turn them into charter schools. So now that's not somebody I would wanna work with.
Uh, another issue that goes on, it seems like in the white schools or, or the affluent schools, they still have things such as senior travel and all of those other things. When we were in school Monroe, uh, you had like the, the travel club where, you know, they might go to Spain or they might go to Costa Rica or they might go to places. What are the chances of bringing that back for, uh, for the lower-level schools or the so-called blackout schools? In regard, because a lot of our kids, all we see is the community that we come from and a lot of them don't even leave that community.
Well, the reason that we see that is because we don't have PTOs in our schools. Affluent schools have PTO. Affluent schools have, uh, uh, booster clubs. We don't have that in our schools. You see what I'm saying? If we had a PTO that could raise money, that could help our kids do that type of stuff, then so be it. What we gotta do is get out the mind frame that people are just gonna keep giving us stuff. We got to go work for it. See, those little white kids don't have a problem standing in front of the Krogers selling Girl Scout cookies. They don't have a problem selling popcorn. Their parents helping them do this. If you want what those white schools got, you gonna have to do some of the things the white schools do. And a PTO is the best place to start. These parents need to become more involved with the everyday operation of the school as well as their child being in the school. And you know what, black parents? You can't get mad at me telling you what I just told you. Because when you send them to the white school, you become very involved. But when they're at the black school, you forget about them.
Wow. So, uh, yeah, that's.
Hey man, I'm telling y'all, what politician you know could stand up under this heat? See, when you know your job and you have the passion to do your job, I don't need a press writer. I don't need somebody telling me what to say. Think about that when you voting for these people. Could they do what I'm doing right now? No. This ain't what they really wanna do. But back to you, Donovan. I'm sorry.
Exactly. Um, as, as we know, cannabis is on the rise in, in schools. You see a lot of these teenagers having, uh, expressing themselves with tattoos and things of that nature. What is your, what would be a policy of yours in regards to elicit cannabis, let's say cannabis, which is, it's an open door type situation, but it's on the rise. How, how would you educate our, you know, would there be a program in the schools that, that, that you could put in there to give them the option of understanding the pitfalls of cannabis and?
You really need more mentorship in the schools at every level. Elementary, middle and high school. Not just to talk about cannabis, but I mean to talk about life. You need mentors in there that could tell them the best sex is no sex. You see what I'm saying? We don't even have to discuss putting a condom on because you shouldn't be having sex. You see what I'm saying? So I think we need more mentors in our schools. And, um, that's not hard to do, which is get with some of the groups that I know that are real with mentoring and see if I can get them to partner with some of these schools. And they will do it. You know, they will do it. The school has to be receptive of it. But I think we need more mentors on every level of education in the Houston Independent School District, which is elementary, middle and high school.
And you guys, again, don't forget to hit that donate button. Every little bit helps. We're gonna get our candidate. We're gonna shake up the Independent School District there and get our candidate. A candidate that actually gives a damn about our children on the board. Now, uh, you know, we talk about caring about our kids now. Could you clarify when we say that, what does that actually mean? Cause you know, saying that could sometimes alienate somebody or they can twist it and say, oh, he's just for the black kids. Well, what do you, what do you mean when you say you, you know, you're passionate for our children?
I don't see a color when I come to kids. And I think I've proven that as an advocate because I've represented every shade that you could represent. Black, white, Latino, uh, Asian, special ed children, transgender. I've represented all of them. So the thing is, I think that we, we have to get out of the habit of just wanting to represent children in our district. Or just wanting to take care of the black schools because in the district that I'm in, all of my schools aren't black. They are not all black. So how in the hell am I gonna be a good school board rep if all I wanna do is represent black children? Now I will say this here, that black children and poor children are the least, the last, the lost. They will be my first priority. They will be my first priority because you tell me, we've seen it. When the pandemic came, African-American kids didn't have computers to do homework. They didn't have wifi. You see what I'm saying? So we got to take care of the ones that don't have first and then we'll get to you halves. But you ones that have, y'all have more than enough. You can wait.
Uh, another question that you brought up because of the pandemic. Uh, if you go to a, to a school or a public entity, you can look at the ledger and see what they bought. Or you can even look at the contracts that they are engaged in in regards. Now in my city here in California, I've noticed when I went to go look at the ledger, a lot of the contracts went to Hispanic contractors. There are almost no black businesses and stuff like that. When you get on the school board, um, are you gonna, uh, and I, I don't know how Houston thing looks or not like that. But are you gonna, uh, make sure that there's some equity in regards to contracts dealing with the school? And how those contracts are going, going out?
Well, the one thing I wanna do in my first year is stay the hell away from the procurement department of the Houston Independent School District because it look like everybody named mama gonna go to jail over there. I don't want no parts of the procurement department. That is not my business, you know? But I will say that there needs to be some understanding, clarification and understanding why African-American businesses are not doing as much business with the Houston Independent School District as they should be. And that just boils down to folks just looking out for they kinfolk. Well, let me put a different way. They looking out for they skinfolk. But our folk, they stealing the money. They ain't looking out for nobody. But everybody else looking out for they skinfolk. But there needs to be some priorities put in place to get more African-American businesses involved in the Houston Independent School District from the vendor level. But Gary Monroe ain't gonna be the one to do it because I ain't going nowhere near the procurement department.
Yes, yes, yes. I mean, you know, and you know, and, and here's another thing you guys notice. He knows about the, he knows what's going on with the procurement thing. We've asked him all kinds of questions in different areas and he has knowledge of all these things. I think this is very important when it comes to a candidate.
I, I am the only candidate that has touched every area of this school district. I've been on the African-American Advisory Board. I've been on special ed, special ed ad hoc committees. You see what I'm saying? I've sat down with every superintendent that has come through the door to discuss making it better for children. You see, it is a priority that when we get a new superintendent, they're going to sit down with me. I wanna see where your head is. But there's not a department, a section of this school district or any issue from the barn that I haven't touched. I've been all over the place touching it. That's why I know it. Now I wish the other nine that set up there knew the same things. Because I challenged my opponent. Right now I only have one, the one that's sitting there, Myrna Guidry. I challenge you. I challenge you right now to the war zone. Let's do this together. And ma'am, no, it's nothing personal with you. I don't know you. But last time I ran, I was nice. But ma'am, if you sit down on this program with me to debate me, I'm gonna eat greedy. I'm gonna eat you up. You know why? Because our baby's future depends on it. No, it's personal with me this time. We gotta put a fight in there and we gotta put somebody in there that wanna go to war for our children.
Um, everybody's, uh, on this other platform, they're asking, um, will, will Mr. Monroe wear a suit while he's on the?
Man, I don't think they ever seen me, but yeah, I wear suits and I'm, I ain't nothing but a big old, big old fashion model. Yeah, I can put the suits on and all that, but I stopped wearing, and people ask me all the time, why did I stop wearing the suits? Man, I run around a lot during the course of a day and, uh, a lot of times, especially when it's hot, I don't wanna be in those suits, man. I, I just, I know how to dress. I can dress appropriately. But regardless of what I dress, I, I've seen a bunch of politicians with suits on screwing the hell out your kids. So you know, I think I could do some slacks and a polo and, and, and I'll be just as comfortable. But yes, I will wear my suits. I will wear my suits.
Again, you guys, uh, if you got any questions, um, and Araya, Araya says, a suit can't. Aria, a suit can't speak. So she's.
That's right.
And she's absolutely right about that.
He is exactly right. A suit don't mean nothing. Though them sitting up there with five degrees don't mean nothing. Some of them still dumb as a bag of rocks.
Right. Um, so, uh, could, could you tell us a little bit about the graduation rates in the Houston Independent School District and what needs to be better?
Well, the first thing that needs to be better is they need to stop pushing them kids out of school that don't know nothing. It's a lot of kids that just graduated that are going to graduate that have not qualified to graduate. Let's just be honest about it. They care about data. They don't care about children. They don't care about kids learning. If these kids are doing so well, why do our boys graduate to corners and our girls to stripper poles? If these kids are learning at the level they say that they're learning at, why so many of them gotta go to college after graduating in the top 10% and they taking remedial classes? You see what I'm saying? We got to stop faking the fact that these kids are not qualified to graduate. The only way that we can help these kids survive is if they get a quality education. And in the classroom, you're going to have to earn your grade. But let's stop caring about their data so much. Dog, they will lie. Look here, man, credit recovery is a joke. You telling me a kid can flunk all year and he finna graduate? He missing three credits. The last two weeks of school, he take credit recovery and get all his credits. Come on, bro. You cheating him out of education. His mama who ain't saying nothing cheating him out one. And when he dead or in the penitentiary, then you'll understand.
Yeah, you know, back in our day, you know, the, 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 the reason why you at least kept your grades up enough to pass is so that you didn't go to summer school. The only kids that really went to summer school were the kids that were like advanced and they wanted to get ahead, but you know, you went to summer school, that was like, no, you don't wanna do that because you wanna play with, you know, with, with your friends during the summertime, but now you got kids that are just careening into the thing and they're just not even doing it anymore. They're just saying, hey, just, just go ahead and pass, uh, uh, pass these kids. So.
You know, Dr. Matthews asked me, will I work with the local NAACP? I've been working with the local NAACP, the whole nine years I've been grinding. And the person that I normally work with is Dr. Carolyn Evans Shabazz, who's the educational chair of the NAACP as well as the city council person for District D. So I don't think that would ever change. Um, you know, at the end of the day, you're a school board rep. You're gonna vote me in office, so I need to, to do my job. So I don't need to be working with nobody. I need to be doing my job. I'm qualified. I can do the job and I don't need to lean on people to tell me what to do. The only people I'ma lean on to tell me what to do is y'all that voted for me.
Uh, I got a question from a, a platform here. Um, a lot of our kids, uh, go to school and have to take in a lot of student debt and student loans. What can you do to solve the, uh, student debt and student loan situation?
Give them a quality education so that they can graduate in the top 10% of their class so they can go to, go to school for free. First of all, let's get something straight. The most important year of a kid's education in high school is his ninth grade year. If he gets off track in the ninth grade, he's not gonna get back on track. He gonna be fighting to get back on track. You see what I'm saying? Because you really don't have but half of your senior year to count towards your GPA. So that ninth grade year is the most important. We gotta get him on track. We gotta get him in the right frame of mind. You see what I'm saying? Now imagine if we could get all these children on track. All these kids could go to school for free. What's wrong with going to school for free? I don't wanna talk about no student loan. I want you to exceed the odds. I want you to go to school for free. They don't believe you can do it, little black girl. They don't believe you can do it, little black boy. I believe in my heart that you can. But we gotta be as serious about education from a parental standpoint that we are from a student standpoint.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean.
Told y'all, I'm ready, man.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, as you know, statistically, our, our, our young ladies are, uh, graduating on a higher uh, success rate than our, our young men, which is, you know, a lot of factors to that, but speaking of our.
Hold on a second.
Go ahead.
Dr. Matthews, I don't know if you can see her comments, but she say, what about the education bill with Harold Dutton? I wanna speak on it. Nobody hears me say anything about Dutton from the educational side. Everybody's like, Dutton created this bill where they're gonna take over Wheatley, the school flunked, and there's a backstory to that. Let's get that straight. And that'll tell you why I don't say anything. See, back in the day when Harold Dutton was, was a young whippersnapper. And he, you know, he wasn't as crazy. Dutton crazy, man. I love him. He crazy. But Dutton went to the superintendent of the Houston Independent School District. Now, I just validated this story the other night on a three-way call and man said, you ain't, you ain't lying about nothing you said. He went to the, the superintendent Tegria to find out what would it take to get Wheatley and Cashmere out of the realm of failing consistently every year? What could we do from, from his job as a legislator to help the school district, help the children so that these schools could stop parentally failing? Greer's attitude, I don't know the exact words, but I know the attitude was like, Negro, we ain't doing nothing. Whoa. So Dutton woke up and figured out he was a state legislator. And said, you know what? This white boy ain't finna talk to me like that. So Dutton went back to Austin and put that wood to him. So bottom line is, how do I feel about Dutton with 1842? I don't have a problem with a black man standing up any way he needed to against white racism from a superintendent that didn't do nothing but fire a bunch of black people, a, a bunch of black teachers and, 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 and failed the black and the brown community when it came to education. So kudos to Dutton for standing up to that clown Greer.
Amen. I love that. Like that. Um, alternative schools, as you know, some of our young ladies, they do get.
Don't like them?
Uh, some of our young ladies do, do get in a little trouble because they're, you know, out there adulting. I'mma call it adulting. What is your, uh, policy or what is your plan in regards to, um, helping our young ladies that might be, uh, young mothers?
Mentoring. Why are you a young mother in high school? I just said it earlier. We need to start teaching no sex. You see what I'm saying? But girls need mentors, just like boys need mentors. Alternative schools, I'm not in favor of. Never have been, never will be. Alternative schools prepare you for prison. That's the way that I feel. It puts you in a certain mentality. Uh, in-school suspension, I'm not a big fan of that. I think in-school suspension should be in-school mentoring. Take the time out to get to know these children. Take the time out to have a conversation to find out what makes them tick. And I think that there's something that needs to be taught on every school campus because we seem to deal with it every way, every day, and that's conflict resolution. How can a kid learn how to solve an issue without it becoming a fight? How can a kid learn how to solve an issue without pulling a gun? We need to teach that. We need to focus heavily on respect. That's what we need to focus on when we mentoring these children. If we can accomplish that goal, man, we gonna have a really good, safe campus where it's nothing but respectable people walking around.
Well, but you know, um, Bobby Scott says ISS is a joke.
It is. It's definitely a joke. I mean, how are you helping the kid by just sitting him in a classroom all day? Just to do his work with nobody in there? That sounds like isolation in the penitentiary. No, you prepping him for, for, for prison. I don't, I don't like it.
So, um, so you know, in, in regards to the budget, um, just off the top of your head, what is the, uh, Houston Independent School District's budget annually?
Say, man, that, that's running about, uh, I say, give or take about two, 2.3 billion. They playing with real money. So that's why they got all their little hidden slush funds.
So you mean to tell me 2.3 billion dollars and yet?
You finna cut the classrooms by 258 dollars per child.
And possibly close some schools.
Oh, ain't no possibly. That's something we need to talk about. Ain't no possibly. They're gonna close them. They're trying to keep it quiet, but they, the numbers don't work.
Yeah, a two-point, man, that's a lot of money. That is a lot of money. And yet the schools are under, some of the schools are underperforming and resources are lacking in certain schools in certain areas. So how do we go about moving some of that money to some of those schools? So there's nine people on the board. You're one of nine. So you're gonna have to get a, a forum together to form a block to do that.
Well, first of all, we, we, we operate inside of a decentralized school district. And what that means is every principal has total autonomy on how they run their campus and how they spend their money on their campuses. Now, that's a scary thing for me because I know some of these principals that can't even balance their personal checkbook. Let alone try to spend money. I've, I've seen some budgets, man. I've seen principal budgets. Where you are allocating 250,000 dollars over here to paper and toiletry. Why you need to spend 250,000 dollars on some toilet paper? But you don't have any money over here for fine arts. That's not making sense. You see what I'm saying? Well, you know, most of our money goes towards our teacher salaries. I get that. But you have other money inside of your budget that you need to learn how to spend. You have some schools that end the year with, you know, they have, they have extra money left over. Some schools end the year with a million, 800,000 left in the bank. You see what I'm saying? But then you got some schools that's in a deficit by the time they get to January because the principal didn't know how to spend the money. So I think the first thing that we should do, we need to be centralized. We've wasted so much money over the years that we need to be centralized. And only X amount of money should be allocated down to make sure that it's spent in the right places. Now, once we can get this, that going for a few years, then maybe we can come back to decentralization. You see what I'm saying? But right now, being decentralized is killing us more than it's helping us.
Bobby Scott says, uh, also, he says, uh, what about recapture?
Oh, man, recapture is a joke from the onset. Recapture is when you have a property-rich district that they end up taking money from to give to a district that don't have money. So HISD did not have to go into recapture. We kept telling them, don't do it. Because if you keep doing it, you keep going into recapture, your recapture payment keeps going up every year. So you know, you might start off your first year at, I'm gonna say you might start off your first year, I'm just throw a number out there because I don't remember the actual number. You may start off your first year at a million five, your recapture payment. Then the next year, your recapture payment is 3.4 million. You see what I'm saying? The more money you're getting in property taxes, the more they're gonna take away from you. But hold on, how are we gonna survive if you're taking money away from us and you're not even giving us enough to operate with? That doesn't work. So I'm not in favor of recapture. I have never been in favor of recapture. And I think that we need to sue to get out of recapture.
You know, being on the school board, you're gonna have to deal with, uh, guidelines and principles that come down from the federal government. As we know, we had previous Secretary Nancy DeVos was a big, uh, uh, magnet school operative. She was making money off of that and they're, you know, rich folks, whatever the deal is. Um, and some of the edicts that come down from the state and stuff, how, how would you? If there's something the state says that you wouldn't like, how would you go about trying to convince the parents or, you know, that this isn't what you, what, what they should do, or, you know, if there's a policy you don't like, or it's, it's in con- conflict with what you think is best for the district?
Well, here's the thing, no matter if I sit on the school board or not, I'm still a member of the community. So if we agree as a collective group in District Nine that this is not best for our children and those people get out there to protest, you best believe old Gary Monroe will be out there as a school board rep with his bull on. I will stand with my people. Now, if there's something that's coming down the pipe that I don't like from TEA or the state of Texas, then one, we have a legislative liaison or whatever they call them that's supposed to go up there when they go up to Austin every two years and you're supposed to be lobbying for us. So I'mma be on it. I'mma be on him the whole time. This is what we need. You see what I'm saying? Like recapture, say, man, you need to be, you need to get your, get your shoes ready. We need you ready. We need you armed and dangerous with the knowledge. We can't keep doing recapture because we're gonna go broke. You see what I'm saying? So it's a way to lobby and advocate, but you gotta know what you're doing. You gotta know what you're talking about. You know, like right now, I mean, we talking about recapture. You know, unless you Bobby, Bobby Scott, Gary Monroe, and a few other of us that have actually battled against it, a lot of people don't even know what we talking about. You see what I'm saying? So, yeah, I mean, but remember, I'm still a member of the community. So I will stand with my teachers. I'mma be protesting all the time anyway for teacher pay. I'm telling you that now. I, I, I need my teachers to make the money they rightfully deserve.
Well, well, you know, you, you know, and I, I'm, I'm for you with the teacher pay, but how do you attract these young, new, uh, you know, innovative teachers coming to Houston when, like you said, so some of them are gonna be put right into gladiators school. So how are you gonna go about attracting them, um, to, to come down to Houston? Let's say I just graduated from, uh, South Carolina and I'm a fresh out of college, you know, got a year, maybe two under my belt.
Okay, so let me ask you a question, Miss South, Mr. South Carolina graduate. So do you wanna work at HISD for 51,000 or do you wanna work over here for 65? I think you'd make a, you'd make a quick decision. It's money. It's just money. And like I say, all we gotta do to get to the money is we gotta play the game fair. We gotta get rid of some positions that we don't need. We're wasteful spending and we need to do what we need to do. But we have to be fair with the raises every year. If our people deserve raises, give them the raises that they rightfully deserve. You know, stop raising their insurance every single year. You know, but you're not raising their money up. A cost of living raise, come on, man. They need to be paid like they work. These teachers are putting in 16, 17 hours a day. You feel what I'm saying? It is what it is.
Uh, Rodrigo Carron says, PTO parents need to get involved with schools, principals to centralize on campus spending for students' education needs. And Bobby, uh, Scott says, is HISD top-heavy?
HISD is too top-heavy. It's too top-heavy. Man, you got so many area superintendents. The SSO position needs to go. It's a waste of money. It is too top-heavy. And, 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 you know, right now, I'm thinking about, you know, I'm in college. I might have to get on a campus just so I can pledge a fraternity. Cause if I pledge a fraternity, I can get a hundred thousand dollar a year job in HISD and be dumb as a bag of rocks.
And, um, does HIS, uh, SD still have a contract with Teach for America?
Yep, they renewed it this year.
Okay, and how, how long is, uh, is that contract, uh, gonna be? Is it renewed every two, three years or just every year annually?
I think this contract is like, uh, well, from the last three or four years, they've been renewing them every year. And I've been not in favor of them. I've just not been in favor of them.
Right, uh, as we know, uh, the Latino community is gonna be the, uh, biggest community within the next 10 years as in voting and representation. And right down there in Houston, the Hispanic community, just like here in California, not that it's exploded. I mean, that used to be Mexico, but the point is they're gonna be a big factor down there. What is, uh, your take on, uh, dual language, mandatory dual language speaking or, or teaching? Because a lot of, a lot of the black kids and, you know, the white kids or whatever, sometimes you're at a disadvantage because you can't speak the alternative language, which is gonna be the dominant language in the United States.
I think I speak two languages. I speak English and slang. I, I think it's, 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 it should be a priority. I really think that it should be a priority. Our Latino community has exploded. And a lot, a lot of our Latino brothers and sisters that send their children to our schools, they don't speak English. So I think it's only right that we have, you know, dual language classes. We, we have to get them up to speed. And I'mma tell you something, those kids do a fabulous job. You know, I've met a few kids that, you know, after three years of me first meeting them, couldn't speak no English. And then three years later, they talking just like me. So you know, I, I, I applaud that, that area of education. I think it's very well and much needed. And we just need to keep, you know, just advancing ourselves on it. And I think every kid needs to learn a different language. I think that you should. I mean, um, it doesn't necessarily have to be Spanish. You know, because in high school, you can take French, you know, whatever, but I think you should have more than one language. And I think that's mandatory in the state of Texas. I mean, I don't know as far as that, but, but most kids that I know, they have taken two languages anyway, so I, I applaud it.
Yeah, you know, because, uh, a lot of our kids are disadvantaged, black kids or whatever are disadvantaged because they only speak one language. Because if you go to a, a lot of job offers, a lot of coming right out of high school, they want you to be bilingual and a lot of us don't. they want you to be bilingual, and a lot of us don't speak a bilingual language because it wasn't mandatory or whatever. So, um, you know, flipping it, as a school board advocate, I would, I would like to see, uh, another language be a mandatory part of the grad, of the graduation process. Because if you look at a lot of jobs where there's a, you know, a lot of Hispanics, you cannot get jobs if you can't speak, you know, a dual language in regards to maybe working for that corporation or, you know, working for, even for the city in some situations, or even the school district.
Well, I think that, 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 um, a legislative agenda that needs to be rolled into our curriculum is financial literacy. I think kids need to learn about financial literacy. Um, but they need to learn about it on a daily basis in a school setting. Because that's where they spend most of their time. So if they don't know how to balance a checkbook, they're not gonna be able to fully function in this world that we live in. So, um, that's something I, I think that they should have on the campus.
Um, i- i- in regards to the, uh, high school to college pipeline, well, what is your take? And, uh, what is a roadmap that you would recommend? In making our kids transition successfully from high school into college or junior college?
Well, first of all, all kids are not built to go to college. Uh, some kids would go to trade school. Some kids will come out of school and want to be entrepreneurs. The thing is, however that kid needs to transition into college, let that be his thing. Um, we need to focus on education while we're in, you know, the early parts of our four years of high school. Um, that will help them transition automatically. Because once you, you know, once you develop good study habits and good traits of being a good student, it's not hard. And I've, I've learned this the hard way. The reason I say that is because when I went to college the first time, I wanted to be Spuzz McKenzie. I wanted to be a part animal, you know, and, and I didn't accomplish the goal. But now at 53 years old, I'm, I'm probably a year away from graduating with my bachelor's. I, I kick myself every day because I'm like, man, this stuff is so easy. It's so easy. You know what I'm saying? And I just think that the transition, and that's why I say when, when it comes to dressing and how you treat these kids, you have to start treating them like they're college students. Not like they're invalids, not like they're idiots, like they can't learn. You have to start treating them like young adults, and that will help that transition into college.
Yes, okay. If you guys got any, any more questions, we got about another 20 minutes to go. So if you got any other questions, uh, put it in the comments. Don't forget to hit that Cash App or, uh, Zelle. Thing, we take all the, all the donations you guys can take. We're gonna get our candidate into, uh, the school board district. But, uh, Gary, you know, on a personal level though, tell us a little bit about, you know, uh, your origin there in the Houston area. What's, what's your, uh, your, your legend? What's your, what's your legend?
Well, I, I mean, I'm born and raised in Houston, man. Uh, I went to Lockhart Elementary. I went to Cullen Middle School. And I always knew I would be a Yates line, no, no questions about it. Um, my mama was from Louisiana, so she would always be like, you going to that school with them Burger King colors. So, you know, and I lived right down the street, so it was nowhere else I was gonna go. Except that while I was in school, I was a, I was a really good student. I was just, you know, crazy. I mean, just crazy and not in a bad way. You know, I was just a kid that ended up just being always caught up in something silly. You know, uh, like we had a vice principal, Mr. Morehead. He had this thing where you couldn't wear your hats in the, uh, in the hallways. So he would take your hat and then, you know, he might give it back to you after school. But if he didn't give it back to you, and I just told him this a year and a half ago, because I, 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 I got him inducted into the Yates Hall of Fame. And when he got ready to accept his award, I had to let him know that you were missing a lot of hats out of your office, because I was the one sneaking up in there stealing all them boys' hats and selling them back to them. So, I mean, I, I was the dude that if I didn't have something to be into in school, you know, I would, I would definitely find something to get into. Um, you know, um, just always been a guy that, that wanna help people. I mean, I don't know why. I mean, that's just been me. And as I've gotten older, I've, I've found a lot of joy in helping people. So it's not a lot to me. It's just, you know, education advocacy is something that I fell in love with. And, um, I just, I had somebody tell me today, man, you done came a long way from standing on a corner, you know, fighting for some kids for some band uniforms. I mean, you all over the country now. But I always told myself, what my coaches told me, if I'm gonna do it, be the best at what you're doing. I think I'm the best education advocate in the state of Texas, if not the country.
Uh, amen on that. I will amen on that. And, um, Bobby Scott says, college is easy because you went to, uh, Jack Yates and got serious.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm gonna be honest with you. I'm walking circles around these kids in the classroom with a 1986 diploma, and that's why I don't understand 21st century learning. I hate laptops. I'm being honest with you. Now, I hate laptops because I love books. So, you know, people like, well, you gonna have to write a lot of papers. You give me a 10-page paper, I can write that paper in about 45 minutes. I can write it that fast. I love to write. So that's the easy part. Math, not my thing. Chemistry, not my thing. You know, but everything else, I can write papers all day. Love it. I've, I've had tutors tell me online that I'm the, I'm their favorite student because of the stories or the essays that I have to write. So, you know, one, one thing about that, what I wanna do with, with that ability is get down to help children when they're going through the scholarship phase in school at the end, where they have to fill out scholarships, because a lot of them don't know how to write essays. So that's something I wanna teach the kids, how to write the essays so that they can get the money from the scholarships, because it's easy. Man, take advantage of free schooling, bro, because you don't want to have to have to pay this money back. But they dead serious about you paying their money back.
Um, you know, you're up there in, in Minnesota, and you've been traveling the country. So, you know, you're, you're not only seeing kids from the Houston area, now you've, you've had an opportunity to see kids all over, especially, you know, uh, now with what's going on in the world. What's your take on, on the kids in these different areas in Minnesota, like where you're at right now? I mean, are they just like the kids in Houston? Are they having the same problem?
They running the same blueprint. The, the same issues you have in education in Houston is the same issues you have in Minnesota, that you have in Lafayette, Louisiana, that you have in Oakland, California, that you have in Dallas, Texas. They running the same blueprint. The problem is, you don't have a Gary Monroe in every city. You don't have people that really care enough to fight these devils. And when you're fighting them, just remember they're billion-dollar bullies. That's what I call them. They're billion-dollar bullies. So I don't have nothing to lose, and that's the way I felt when I first started. I didn't have nothing to lose for fighting for these kids, and that's what it is.
So, so, so basically, if, if, if these kids are having the same problems all across the nation, you're saying that we're dealing with a, uh, uh, a systemic problem within the education system towards black people or just poor people in general, black and poor people in general?
Say that again. I didn't hear you. I got a call. I'm sorry.
Yeah, um, so you're saying with, with, uh, you know, across the nation, with all these problems in different places across the nation, we're dealing with a, a system of systemic educational
Racism.
Racism, uh, across the nation. And, you know, how, i- if it's a, a concept and a system that is prevalent across the nation and, and obviously as a policy, how can a Gary Monroe, you know, by him, by himself make a difference?
Let's just start with the Houston Independent School District. The one thing I learned about criminals is they don't get caught, they get comfortable. And when they get comfortable, they start making mistakes. So once you can figure out where they violated the law, you develop your relationship with your three friends, the F, the B, to the I. And start turning in all that information on them. And then they'll start talking to you and wanting to fix whatever problem you got. I had somebody call me today. They had an issue at a school, and the lady called me laughing. She said, I just wanna tell you that when I brought up your name to the people at the school, the woman started shaking like booty meat, Mr. Monroe. She said, I do not want that fool at my school. I'm gonna lose my job, because when I come, I'm coming to take from you what you've taken from our children. I want you to be just as uncomfortable as they are. So if you lose your job because you didn't do your job, sorry for you. So I don't play no games in this thing, man. But I just think that it, it's somebody in every city just gonna have to stand up. The closest thing I could see to it is Garrett Chambers in Baton Rouge, Louisiana. He's got a lot of, you know, pub for standing up against that school system, and, and when you stand up, you get things done. You just get things done.
And last but not least, since we're talking about Louisiana, my birth, birth state, got a lot of family down there, beautiful women, of course, that are all across there, and Texas too. Don't get me wrong, Texas has a lot of them too. There was an incident in Lafayette, I believe, uh, where those young girls ended up murdering the, the one girl. And all that, oh, Lake Charles, yeah, that was in Lake Charles.
Melanie Lyons.
And, yeah, Melanie Lyons. And, um, you know, so you have a lot of, a lot of young people that are being influenced out there by these Facebooks and these, uh, TikToks and all that other stuff that, that's going on, that's kind of derailing our young women. Uh, by the way, black women are the fastest, uh, group of women walking into prison as we speak. That's statistically fact. How, what is your policy in regards, or what would be your policy in regards to, you know, these young girls? And I said, I, I'm all for these young girls expressing themselves and doing what they gotta do. But with the, the negative stuff that's going on in regards to these girls fighting more and getting in more gang warfare and, you know, being a little bit more, whatever you call unladylike. What, what, what would be your thing?
Well, first of all, we have to, we have to make the girls as well as the boys clearly understand that a school is an educational environment. And you will not be a disruption to the educational environment. As much as I love you, I will not allow you to disrupt the educational environment. And if it comes down to that, then we will have to get your parents involved. We don't wanna get to the point, because every school district has this autonomy, that they can eventually just put you out. We don't wanna get to that point, but I'm not gonna let you be a distraction. Now, two, my female teachers have to set the example. They have to set the example. So during your course, your day of teaching, the course of your day of teaching, I want you to present something extra to the female population and challenge them to not just become better students, but become better young ladies. That's what I would want you to do. Now, I can't force that as a school board rep, but that would be something I would recommend. That's something that I preach right now as an advocate. Because I can't reach a young lady. It's gonna take a lady to reach a young lady. So, I mean, once we kind of put it in motion to where they know, they know what the example is, then all they gotta do is reach for the goal. Now, this is the one thing that I don't do with children in school. All this extra, let me give you an incentive for this, and you made the honor roll, and I need to give you a pizza party. No, I don't. You expected to make the honor roll. If you do what you're supposed to do, those are your expectations, and that's what it should be. Now, when you walk across that stage, and I know you've been through hell and back, I got to do something beautiful for you. But just because you're doing what you're supposed to do, no, that comes with the game. And we gotta stop that, because that's not realism when they get out into the world once they graduate. Just because you show up every day on time for work, don't mean your boss gonna give you some extra money. No, you're supposed to be there on time. So I expect you to be here on time, going to class on time, being an attribute to the classroom, an asset to the classroom. Show me leadership skills as a kid. You see what I'm saying? And every now and then, I might do something out of the ordinary. But don't expect it, because in life, you're just gonna have to do the right things at all times, no matter what.
Right, uh, in Baltimore, there was a young man who missed over a thousand days worth of school, and the parent knew nothing about it. What, what is your take in regards to attendance in regards to?
The parent should be in jail. Because it ain't no way, hell, a parent ain't gonna know their kid that missed a thousand days. Uh, I, I think that you can't learn if you're not at school. I think the pandemic has shown us why in-classroom education is very important. Because a lot of kids just can't function without that, that extra support in the classroom. So, you know, I, I think that, you know, when it comes down to that, we monitor our kids' attendance every day from a school level, and when it, when it, when it hits that number, you know, if a kid misses, you know, two or three, two or three days, you know, in a, in a class, you know, then we should be on the phone with the parents. Remember one time somebody came home in my house. Look at my report card. Oh, As, Bs. I said, that's nice. But over here in this math class, they say you got like nine absences. What, what you talking about? What you mean, what I'm talking about? I'm talking about the nine absences. Oh, I'll be at the school in the morning. They didn't call me because they say, oh, well, it was tardies. I don't care if it was tardies. If it was tardies, you need to be on the phone with me as a parent. See, I'm gonna hold the school accountable, because they wanna hold me accountable. Let's do it together. And then when this baby walks across that stage, you ain't gotta deal with me no more. Man, I'm, 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 I'm ready. We gonna kill it. We been here almost two hours. But I wanna ask y'all. Joe Biden couldn't answer questions the way that I just did. I didn't know what y'all were gonna ask me. But I know my job. I know what I wanna do. You see what I'm saying? So if any politician is running, they can't do what I just did for two hours, and it didn't matter what you asked me, I could answer everything. Then why would you give them your vote? Donovan?
Impressive, as, as usual. I, like I said, if I could vote down there, I would vote. And again, I, you know, I, I look at you people and I say, you know, you're looking at somebody that is just like you, and you're saying, I could do that job, and this guy's just like you. So why not get somebody that's just like you to represent your school district and, and look out for your children? And that's the kind of person I'm looking for. The questions were great. Again, you guys, please, please, you don't have to just wait for the day. You donate up until election time or whatever. Every penny counts.
We, we need money, man. We, we doing good. You know, we, we need money, like tonight. Because I like to be honest with people. Uh, hold on, let me see. Tonight, I'm trying to see, we only raised a hundred and ninety dollars. A hundred and ninety dollars is not gonna win an election.
Right.
I'm just telling y'all, but, you know, I am grateful for the hundred and ninety dollars, and we'll use it the best way we can. I think we, we finna start ordering our, our push cards, our postcards. You know, I wanna have 10 to 15,000 of them on hand. And, uh, yeah, we, we, we gonna be, we gonna be all right. But, you know, whenever you can give, give whatever you can give. Doesn't matter 50 cents, a dollar. I don't care. It'll all add up at the end.
Yeah, and, and I, I just wanna add this, and if you guys watched the show last night and you watched my, click on my page. Do you guys know politically, and that means for school districts and stuff like that, in nine years, the black vote will be irrelevant? So if we do not get the right people into these seats, we are going to be irrelevant as in wealth, as in power, as in even just to speak in regards to policy versus, be it on, on the school board, be it in politics. We have less than nine years to go, and this is how serious it is. We've gotta get the right people in the right places, or our children are doomed. And I'm not doing that to scare you. Those are the numbers. And you heard Joe Biden yesterday goes to a, a black event and says absolutely nothing and what he can't do. Black people, we must save ourselves.
Say, man, I wanna thank you for taking the time out. It's the war zone, and we the best in the business. Every night, seven o'clock on YouTube and Facebook, I wanna thank my good friend Donovan Siddique. And you know me, I'm the five-star general. HISD trustee, Myrna Guidry, District Nine. I'm taking your seat in November. Step into my world, because when I say I'm ready, I'm battle-tested. My kids need me, but I need y'all. Donate as much as you can, and let's kick they ass in November. Until tomorrow night, we'll holla at you.